Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, September 25th, 2017. I appreciate you all coming out on this cold rainy evening. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise and please remain standing after the Pledge of Allegiance for the invocation by Reverend Darrell Keeney, Lighthouse Baptist Church, 3919 Green Avenue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take up my clergy cap for a moment. As a taxpaying citizen who loves this city, just say a word. We, as taxpaying citizens, need you, as the leaders gathered here tonight, to be the wisest and best leaders you can be. Now, I'm going to pray and put my clergy cap back on and ask God to make that a reality. Let's pray. Father God, I do ask that you would fill these leaders that are gathered here, who love this city as I do, that you would fill them with wisdom, fill them with discernment, help them to know what is best. And Father, I pray as well that we, as citizens, would be wise followers. Most of all, Father God, I pray for your glory and that you would bless this city in ways that we would look and say, "God, thank you for what you're doing in this city. It is a great place to be here and to live." And we pray out for all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Keeney. Item number two is roll call. Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Thank you. Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chamber. Item three, approval of agenda, consent agenda, minutes and advisory committee reports.
Subitem A is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Modri.
I move we approve the agenda.
Second.
Second, Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item B is the approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or a citizen so requests its removal, in which case that item will be included in the normal sequence on the agenda. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the September 11, 2017, meeting of the city council. Item two is approval of claims. Item three, approval of applications for waivers of hunting regulations. And item four is the approval of documents to release the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Deed of Trust at 2809 Olive Street. Mayor and city council members, are there any of these items you'd have removed from consent status?
Mr. Shannon.
Thank you. There's a bill for the police for a motorcycle lease for $19,080. I would like that pulled off consent agenda and moved to item 12C1. I'd like us to approve the purchase before we approve the payment.
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, I have it.
Thank you.
I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister.
With that amendment?
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Discussions or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item four, approval of claims under consent agenda. Item five, special presentation, none. Item six, liquor license.
Item A is Bellevue Volunteer Firefighter Hall application for a special designated liquor license during a fundraiser being held at the Reed Community Center, 1200 Lord Boulevard, on October 15, 2017, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Thank you.
Dee Gray, representing Bellevue Volunteer Firefighter Hall, 2108 Franklin Street. A private citizen's family has requested the Firefighter Hall Act as catering for beer and wine for this fundraiser. This private citizen is in need of a lung transplant. There was some confusion as to whether or not this was a fundraiser for the Hall. It is not. Because it is off-premise, they require an SDL to be able to cater the beer and wine at the Reed Center.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We recommend to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission the Bellevue Volunteer Firefighter Hall application for a special designated liquor license during the fundraising being held at the Reed Community Center, 1200 Lord Boulevard, on October 15, 2007, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. That it be approved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll be upstanding from voting for items 6A through E for religious and personal reasons.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Gray.
Item B is St. Matthew's Evangelist Catholic Church application for a special designated liquor license during a trivia night being held at St. Matthew's, 12210 South 36th Street, on October 27, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Is there anyone here to represent St. Matthew's? Welcome.
Yes, Diane Roush. And I think he just said it all. I don't know what you would like to hear.
I could just have you go ahead and sign in.
Okay.
And you're here in case the council has any questions.
Oh, okay.
Are there any questions from the council? See none, I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. I see none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Shannon.
Mayor, I would move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Commission for St. Matthew's Catholic Church application for a special designated liquor license during a trivia night being held at St. Matthew's, 12210 South 36th Street, on October 27, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes, one abstention.
Thank you. Good luck, Ms. Roush. Thank you.
Item C, Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, application for a special designated liquor license during a wine tasting being held at Daniel J. Gross High School, 7700 South 43rd Street, on November 17, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Good evening. This is the 15th year in a row that I'm down here asking for the same application for their wine tasting. It's very tasty, as a matter of fact. It raises about $5,000 for them every year because of it, and we have a lot of controls built into it. We don't try and over-serve anybody, and everybody makes it home, so it's a good evening.
Are there any questions from the council?
Jim, would you identify yourself for the council, please?
State your name.
James Subject.
Thank you.
I'm the store manager, owner of Willow Springs Bottling Company, Cornhusker Beverage Mart.
Thank you. I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close this public hearing. Wish of the council. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, application for a special designated liquor license during the wine tasting being held at Daniel Gross High School, 7700 South 43rd Street, on November 17, 2017, from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Mr. Subject, don't go away. Let's do this two more times.
At least one.
One more time.
Item D is Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, application for two special designated liquor licenses for holiday parties at Elder Jewelry, 10531 South 15th Street, number 101, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on both December 13 and December 20, 2017.
Do you want to say a few words about this event?
Okay, this designated permit is basically because they want to have a meet and greet for their customers. They'll have some hors d'oeuvres and some beverages there. But basically, it's right before Christmas, and they want to, one, bring the guys in to find out what they want, and the one, find out what the girls want so the guys can go back and buy it. This is the fourth year in a row that we will have done this, and same thing as the other ones. We have no problems. We have trained bartenders, and they know when to cut them off.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? See none, I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. I see no one. We'll close the public hearing. Wish of the council. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the Willow Springs Bottling Company, Inc., doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, application for two special designated liquor licenses for holiday parties at Elder Jewelry, 10531 South 15th Street, number 101, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on both December 13 and 20, 2017.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Item A is Old Town Tavern, application for a special designated liquor license during an Oktoberfest event being held at 107 West Mission Avenue Backlot and Parking, on October 14, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to represent this item? See none, I'll go ahead and open for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Shannon.
Mayor, I would make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for Old Town Tavern, application for a special designated liquor license during an Oktoberfest event being held at 107 West Mission Avenue, their backlot and the parking area, on October 14, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading.
Item A is ordinance number 3881, being the creation of a firefighter's retirement committee. I'll read the title. An ordinance to create Article 1 of Chapter 24, Sections 24-1 through 24-4 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the establishment of the Bellevue Firefighters Retirement Committee to provide for the approval of the bylaws for the same and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance. Subitem one is the approval of the bylaws, and subitem two is approval of the appointments of fire, five, excuse me, five firefighter committee, or retirement committee members.
Mr. Shannon.
All right. Last meeting, I took the time to rewrite this and try to get us back to the statute. I see we've gone right back to where we were. So, the statute says that for these positions will be appointed by the fire department. Two of the positions will be appointed by the city council. All right? The bylaws as they exist for tonight is saying that the fire department's going to tell us who they're picking, the mayor's going to appoint them, we're just going to have approval. We need to stay with the statute.
Mr. Modri.
It's point of order, Mayor. We need a motion before we can discuss.
Do you want to put that in a motion, Mr. Modri?
All right, I'll move that we approve bylaws for the Bellevue Firefighters Retirement Committee.
And I'll second, for discussion purposes.
Second by Mr. Shannon.
All right, so...
Mr. Shannon, we second.
...by the bylaws? Of the ordinance?
Ordinance bylaws?
Okay. I'll amend my motion to approve ordinance number 3881.
And I'll stay with you on a second.
And now we'll open for discussion or questions.
All right, so, go ahead.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have a discussion, and we were going to have legal do some drafting. I'm just wanting to check with Mr. Buckley and see the response.
Yes, you'll see in the packet, as far as the ordinance goes, Section 24-21 of the ordinance was amended to add an additional sentence that states that the council is delegating the authority for all functions and general administration of the retirement system to the firefighters' retirement committee. That was the only change in the ordinance, and then some other changes were made in the bylaws to make it mirror state statute with respect to having six members on the committee, four chosen by the firefighters, two chosen by the city council.
Any other discussion? Mr. Cook.
So, what you're saying is 24-21 is verbatim, except the sentence you added, of matching the state law?
That's correct.
And then 24-2 is verbatim to the state law?
That is correct.
And then 24-3 is the same as per...
Twenty-four.
I'm just going to go down, Tim.
Yeah.
What we did was, we have now mirrored, there's 24-4, we have now mirrored what the state law says.
That's correct. All those sections mirror state law.
And that would then coincide to the bylaws, would be not in conflict of the bylaws.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's right.
Why add the sentence? What was the purpose of adding the sentence to 24-21?
Because the statute states that the city council shall oversee all the function of the retirement committee unless they delegate that authority to the firefighters' retirement committee, which that sentence accomplishes.
So, basic...
The ordinance I'm fine with.
Okay, so, what are you not fine with?
The bylaws.
Okay, I misunderstood. I'm sorry, Mayor. I misunderstood. I thought we had a concern about the actual ordinance.
No, the ordinance is fine. It's the bylaws I have heartburn with.
Okay.
Mr. Manjimelli.
The appointments, which is subitem two, you have five listed. We're fine with that. After the hearing last meeting, councilmember Shannon received an email from a person that was interested in serving. We will vet that person and hopefully be in a position to bring that recommendation to the city council for that person's service on the committee, as the bylaws would reflect through the normal nomination and appointment process.
Recommended by firefighters, and then the mayor's approval. So, the statute says that...
Are there any questions from the side party? No.
Well...
Mr. Cook.
I guess what's in question is, maybe, Tim, you could better answer this. In the bylaws, it says all members shall be employees of the Bellevue Fire Department except one, who shall be a resident of Bellevue.
Let me correct. That's as originally presented. If you go down lower, you will see an amended bylaws. It says corrected in the top right corner on the first page, and then you'll see under section two, members, we have some redlined language that mirrors the state statute.
Thank you.
Mr. Modri, do you have a question?
Yes, so, the motion was on the ordinance itself, so, will that be what we vote for here first?
Well, just a point of clarification on that. The ordinance has the bylaws attached to it, and the ordinance incorporates the bylaws by reference, so...
Okay.
You're making one vote on both the ordinance and the bylaws.
Okay, so we can discuss the bylaws now as well.
Discuss the bylaws as well as the ordinance.
Okay. I have some questions, then. I guess in the bylaws, we, well, and in the appointment of members to the committee, I guess we're proposing that Mr. Manjimelli be one of the members in the bylaws.
That's been changed. If you have, read the second version.
Right.
It remains as ex officio.
Ex officio, right.
So, you'd have four firefighters...
Yep.
And two citizens appointed by the city council. We have one that we've been working with since August.
Yes, yes.
We would like to have that person appointed this evening. That'll give us five.
Okay.
And the ordinance and the bylaws provide for a sixth member.
Yes.
And as I indicated, we'll vet that, another person who's been recommended, and then hopefully bring that person to fill that sixth position to the city council for approval at an upcoming meeting.
All right. Okay. Because you indicated last meeting that you would like to be a voting member, but you're okay with ex officio?
I'm not going to press the issue. The ordinance and the bylaws conform to the state statute.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we match there. Didn't say ex officio, and then you were also appointed.
No, no. In the new version, it does retain the ex officio.
Okay. Then I have another question, I guess. We still say that the members who are not participants in such retirement systems shall have, gives the experience and so forth, and shall be recommended by the firefighters and confirmed through a mayoral nomination process by the Bellevue City Council. Why are we restricting ourselves now and in the future to having those members recommended by the firefighters?
When we originally did the drafting, I thought that was comparable to what happens in other communities, and that the firefighters work with people all the time that might have an interest, and they like to have an opportunity to recommend who would serve.
I think the legislative intent is that we were going to have a six-member committee, and the legislature gave the fire department four of the appointments, gave us two of the appointments, so we're going against the legislative intent here by writing a bylaw that says that now the fire department's going to control our two.
The firefighter group can recommend, under the current version of the bylaws. You know, again, this is what's done in other communities. We're making a big deal out of nothing here, I think. Take that sentence out if you wish.
Mr. Modri.
Yeah, I move to amend the bylaws by striking the words "recommended by the firefighters", and so that it reads now, "Members who are not participants in such retirement systems shall have financial planning, retirement plan, or labor relations experience, and shall be confirmed through a mayoral nomination process by the Bellevue City Council."
Did you want to make a motion?
I did make a motion.
Was that the motion?
Yes. And I'll second that.
We have a second by Mr. Shannon. Discussion, Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we need to recognize that this is the firefighters' retirement committee. This isn't the city's retirement committee. It's the firefighters who have the vested interest. It's the firefighters who want it to succeed, so when they retire, they have a good retirement for themselves. We have city input. We certainly have a vested interest, too, but this is their committee, and I think it's a mistake to take that out. I think they should be more in control because essentially, it's their retirement. They're not going to mess it up intentionally or unintentionally if they can avoid it any more than we are. And I think they should have this ability, just as I believe currently, the police retirement has the same authority. I don't want to change and get things out of whack between the two as we're trying to be more uniform. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It just seems that anything that's done, whether it's recommended by the firefighters or if somebody comes to me or any councilman and said, "I'd like to be on that committee," we still have the final say in it.
Right.
So, it doesn't make any difference who makes the recommendation. If the firefighters want to make one, and that that person sounds good, they'll be fine, just like somebody talked to Mr. Manjimelli, or I saw that information, like serving on it. So, I think we're kind of getting into a lot of details, but we still, according to bylaws, we have the final say, no matter who makes the recommendation. Am I correct on that?
Correct.
Right.
So, we have a motion and a second?
On the amendment.
We have an amendment.
An amendment. Do you want to vote on the amendment? Okay.
Okay. All that. Sabrina?
Yes.
Just so I'm clear, where is this at so I can strike it properly? In what section?
It's section two.
Paragraph one.
Okay.
Bylaws, right. Jim. In the bylaws. The corrected bylaws, section two, members.
Paragraph one, about halfway down. Just strike "recommended by the firefighters."
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Burns.
So, right now, we're voting on Jim's amendment.
Amendment.
Amendment. Okay, that's why I want to make sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Cook.
And Mr. Modri's amendment is what the state law says.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Burns, did you have another question?
No, I don't.
Okay. Please vote.
Vote is four to two. Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we're back to the ordinance. We had a motion and a second already on the ordinance. Discussion and amendment. Any other questions on the ordinance?
As amended.
As amended. See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
So, we still have item two, which is the approval of the appointments of the five recommended members.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve all five of the appointments as listed in our agenda packet.
Point of order. We don't have approval authority for five. The city council only has approval authority over two. Once the fire department appoints the four, they're on.
We still have the final authority, and the city has to act...
Only have two.
...on all of the appointments.
I would ask the city attorney to weigh in.
Well, the city does have final approval on all appointments, but the statute and now the code has been amended, and the bylaws say that four shall be selected by the firefighters. So, I don't... Unless these, unless four of these were selected by the firefighters... Four of these were, four of these are firefighters. Okay, well, if four of these were selected by the firefighters, then it complies with the rules.
Right. But as far as us approving tonight, we only have authority to approve two of the positions, so we can approve one of them tonight, because the other four are the firefighters, and they're already on.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So, yes, you're appro, the four who are selected from the firefighters are already on the committee. I don't believe that they require additional approval from the council.
Basically, we lack statutory authority to approve.
You are only approving the non-firefighter members.
Right.
So, if you want to amend the motion, there was a motion made, I believe, to approve all five.
I amend my motion to approve the one. Four are already apparently approved.
That I'll second.
Second by Mr. Shannon. Sabrina, are you keeping up?
Yeah.
Did you need Mr. Buckley to verify or confirm?
I'm all right.
We're good? Okay. Any discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item B is ordinance number 3886, excuse me, 3884, amending Section 8-41 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of dangerous buildings. I'll read the title and ordinance to amend Section 8-41 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the definition of dangerous buildings, to repeal Section 8-41 of the Bellevue City Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Mr. Modri.
I move that we approve ordinance number 3884.
Second by Mr. Hanson. Discussion, questions? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I move to amend ordinance 3884 by adding back item number 10 and changing and revising number ten, and changing and revising that existing, that item to read, "Those buildings existing in violation of safety-related provisions of the building code or other ordinances of this city, or any provision of the fire prevention code of this city," uh, as, as is shown in the amendment which I have passed around to all of you.
Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
I would offer a friendly amendment. We, we discussed this amendment before the meeting, and I believe, Jim, your intent to make "safety-related" apply to both provisions of the building code-
And other ordinances.
And other ordinances.
Yes.
So I think we need to duplicate the word "safety-related" in between "other" and "ordinances" to make it work the way you intended. So I would just offer that as a friendly amendment.
I accept that friendly amendment.
Okay.
So, Mr. Modri, your amendment is you add section ten back, and have it read, "Those buildings existing in violation of safety-related provisions of the building code or other safety-related ordinances of this city, or any provision of the fire prevention code of this city."
Yes.
Sabrina, you follow? We're good? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know what we're trying to do here, so I would ask Mr. Modri what problem we have experienced, or what situation there is out there that causes this to be brought forward.
Can I get a point of order first? Sabrina, do you have a second on Mr. Modri's motion?
I do.
Okay, thank you. No, it was all in one amendment by Mr. Modri.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Preister, your question, again?
I, I just asked it of Mr. Modri, if he would please respond.
Yeah, I've got it. Uh, well, first, the only way government operates is through force. And so we need to make sure that that force, uh, and power is, is checked in some manner. The existing item ten, which read "Any provision of the building code or ordinances of the city or pri- fire prevention code could be used to deem a bell- building as dangerous," I felt was too far overreaching. There are many provisions of the building city code, other ordinances, and so forth that have nothing to do with, with safety. Three exterior, you know, materials, uh, on the, the facing of, of a building, for example. There are others that may be safety-related, uh, that, in my opinion, probably wouldn't deem a building being, uh, called dangerous, but I'm, I'm willing to accept that. If it's at least safety-related, uh, it may have some bearing on a building as being dangerous. One can argue that, uh, perhaps this section was abused. I won't, I won't get into that. Whether it has or not, I think some control on it to prevent possible future abuse is in order.
So you're looking primarily at prevention and limiting government's authority and control?
Yes.
Uh, I would ask if, uh, Mr.-
Roberts.
Mr. Roberts, the names are reversed.
Oh, it is.
We needed a little levity, anyway. If Mr. Roberts would please respond.
Do they say twin A and twin B?
In, in terms of any, uh, and I wanna ask others as well, but it, just in terms of your perspective, uh, building codes and any things that we may need to do, does this have any impact that you see? That would be negative?
Well, I guess if I'm understanding the question right, as far as-
This section, I believe, is the catch-all, because you can't assume to know everything and all circumstances. So this last section gives the city and the code inspectors, and fire inspectors, and the police inspectors, and, uh, I don't know that streets or parks, or maybe some of the other areas in public works really don't deal with this at all. It's more permits and fire and police, so.
Mr. Preister, having said that, I think perhaps the fire chief could better address it than the public works director.
Probably so. So, Chief, if you would.
In my opinion, the fire prevention code is based off of either, um, incidences that have cau- have happened in the past, that they've looked at them, and there's been catastrophes, um, or they're trying to prevent them. So, when I, when you look at the fire prevention code, I don't even have the authority to waive the fire prevention code unless I can find an alternative that makes it as safe. That's the, that's the, the rules I operate on. So, just by that statement, I have to make sure that the safety issue that it was formed can be, um, mirrored in a different fashion. So, in my opinion, those codes exist, all of them, for safety. I don't know how you, I don't know how, what you would do. How, what would you decide, how would you decide "safety-related"?
Mr. Modri.
No, but you are saying "in other safety-related co- fire prevention codes."
No.
Every-
Any, it reads "Any provision of the fire prevention code of the city." We recognize fire prevention code is all pretty much safety-related. I did not change that. I'm adding "safety-related" for pro- provisions of the building code or other ordinances of the city, only.
Understood. My mistake on that.
We don't have anybody here from permits and inspections, and I'm not sure that the police chief is prepared to answer, so I, I don't think it's good to do this, and I think we're incomplete with information at this time.
Mr. Hanson.
Um, I think what Mr. Modri's looking at, and it's really a provision that just says, the very last thing is, uh, these, "Any buildings for any violation of any provisions of any building code." Okay, for instance, I haven't mowed my yard in two months. Does that make my building dangerous? No, I don't think it does. So, I think what he's saying, "Any safety-related codes." So that's what he's looking at, and not the fire. So, is that your point? I mean, I don't disagree with that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's a good clarification. I would call the question and ask for a vote.
Second. Please, please vote.
Vote is five to one. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading.
Sub item A is, uh, ordinance number three eight eight five, rezoning lots one through one hundred and seven, and outlots A through H, Belalago, from AG to RE, RGS, excuse me, RG fifty dash PS, and RG twenty-eight PS. With site plan approval, the applicant is Boyer Young Development, general location, Forty-Eighth Street and Cape Heart Road. Uh, accompanying this is sub item one, approval of the preliminary plat. For lots one through one zero seven, and outlots A through H, Belalago.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, one hundred and fourteen, forty, West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Boyer Young Development Company. With me tonight from Boyer Young Development Company is Dave Boatman. Also with me tonight is Mark Westergaard of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. Uh, if you recall, we were before this council back in March, um, with respect to a sixty-acre development in the same location generally, and I think at that point in time, we mentioned that we had the Bellevue Church of Christ property under contract. Since that time, we've actually been successful in closing and acquiring that property. So, what was once a sixty, or a thirty-acre, seventy-five-lot development, it is now a sixty-one acre, so we've essentially doubled it in size, and, uh, included, uh, or created a hundred and seven lots. And so what we're here for tonight is, of course, approval of the preliminary plat as, as well as the rezoning of the hundred and seven lots that are before you. In your packet, you probably see on the eastern side of the development is Lot One. Uh, that is an existing house and related, uh, structures, and that house will stay there and, and will remain in existence. It did not fit within the, uh, number of acres that are required under the AG zoning, so we were required to rezone that property to residential estates. With respect to lots two through a hundred and six, these are being rezoned RG fifty, uh, with a planned subdivision. The, this is a villa-style concept. This is the same proposal that was essentially, uh, brought to this council back in March. The average sales price of the villas are expected to be about three hundred thousand dollars, so they'll be a very nice product here. There are some waivers, again, uh, with respect to the front and rear yard setbacks. The, uh, front yard was, uh, thirty-five required, twenty-five requested, rear yard, uh, twenty-five required, and twenty-foot requested. This is the same essentially as what was before this council back in March. Um, the, the new, uh, part of this development relates to Lot one oh seven, which is to be rezoned RG twenty-eight planned subdivision, which is a multifamily component of the proposed development. The, uh, multifamily component will have a hundred and twenty units, there'll be sixty-five garages, and a hundred and ninety surface parking spaces, for a total of, uh, two hundred and fifty-five parking spaces. They, um, are three-story buildings, and there's essentially five of those buildings. And, uh, so this is in compliance with the density under that particular zoning classification. And we think it fits well as a good transition between Forty-Eighth Street and Cape Heart and the, uh, villa product that's being produced on the lots one through a hundred and six. If you recall, this is still surrounding what's Outlot B, which is a fifteen-acre pond. It's subject to an NRD easement. There will be pedestrian access to the pond from not only the villa product or the hundred and six units, but also from the, uh, apartment unit as well. So the tenants and residents of the apartment structure will also be able to access the pond, uh, through sidewalks and trail systems around the pond. There are also eight, uh, different outlots with attention basins and, uh, green space, um, and ones for utilities. It, again, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, which calls for, designates this property as medium-density residential, and access will be from an extension of South Forty-Fifth to Cape Heart Street, and the development will also have access to South Forty-Eight via Lawnwood Drive, which is the, uh, street that goes across the, the new parcel that was recently acquired. The, uh, multifamily lot will not have direct access onto Forty-Eighth Street, but it will have two access points onto Lawnwood Drive, and then, of course, to Forty-Eighth Street. And, uh, Lawnwood Drive, just for your information, is deemed a collector road, so it can, uh, take care of all the traffic that's generated by not only the multifamily housing component, but also the hundred and six villa lots. Uh, this will be developed through the use of a sanitary improvement district. There were no technical deficiencies in the plan department's recommendation, and we did receive a favorable recommendation from the department. This also comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the planning commission. We also requested that the school boundary be changed from Platteview, or Springfield Platteview School District to the Bellevue Public School District. That was approved by the, uh, Springfield Platteview School Board, uh, last month, and my understanding, it goes to the State Reorganization Committee on October twentieth, and we anticipate that that will be a favorable, uh, result as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this particular development. And again, uh, Mr. Boatman and also Mr. Westergaard are here as well.
Any questions for Mr. Jobin? Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. What will be the average price of the homes?
Uh, three hundred thousand.
And the villas?
In the villas, yes. And that's really all there are. The, the one house on the other side of, the eastern side of the lake is already in existence, and that's a, nothing's gonna be done there.
The, the lake, is that gonna be a homeowners association responsibility?
Exactly, that's an outlot, so by definition, being an outlot's unbuildable. It will be owned by the association and maintained by the association. It will not be owned by the sanitary improvement district, so the city will not-
So, for eternity?
For eternity.
Even after we annex someday?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Uh, I don't know if Mr. Roberts or Mr. Schuchuck, uh, traffic lights, are there anything built in there? I'm already getting, I've already gotten some complaints about the, with, uh, Cape Heart Road extended, out to eighty-fourth Street paved. I just, last week, had a resident that lives south of Forty-Eighth and Cape Heart Road asking about traffic lights. I know that's probably dictated by traffic counts, but being on the corner here, is there any concern in the near future of needing traffic lights, and should they possibly cost share into that venture?
At some point in time, yes, there may need a, a traffic signal at Forty-Eighth and Cape Heart. As you men- mentioned, it is based on traffic counts in the area. And I'll say, at this point in time, it's probably hard to say that this development, uh, would be responsible for a certain percentage of that, uh, that traffic signal to, to assign a cost to them in a subdivision agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jobin? See none, I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? We are, this is a public hearing on this item. See none, I'll close the public hearing. The last and final reading will be on October the ninth.
Item B is ordinance number three eight eight six, amending section eight dash zero five of the zoning ordinance regarding wireless communication towers and antennas. The title is an ordinance to amend section eight point zero five of ordinance number three six nine, three six one nine, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to wireless communication towers and antennas, to repeal such section as heretofore existing, and to provide an effective date of the ordinance, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing. Third and final reading will also be on October the ninth. Item nine, ordinance for induction, first reading, none. Item ten, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, none. Item eleven, resolutions.
Sub item A is resolution number two zero one seven dash one six, awarding the contract for collection, transfer, and delivery of residential solid waste, recyclable materials, and yard waste for a ten-year period beginning May two thousand eighteen, to Papillion Sanitation and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract.
I move to approve item eleven A.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item B is resolution number two zero one seven dash one seven, authorizing the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement with Plattsmith, Cass, and Sarpy Counties, Papio, Missouri Natural Resources District, Lower Platte South Natural Resources District, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency.
I move to approve item eleven B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion questions? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one no.
Thank you. Motion carries. Eleven C.
Eleven C is or, uh, excuse me, resolution number R, excuse me, two zero one seven dash one eight, authorizing the mayor to sign the inter-local agreement creating the Sarpy County and, and city's wastewater agency, which provides for Bellevue's input into future sewage and wastewater improvements.
Mr. Modri.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve resolution, yeah, excuse me, resolution number two zero one seven dash eighteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Item D is resolution number two zero one seven dash one nine, authorizing the mayor to sign the lobbying services agreement with Kissel Cohoot S Associates LLC for lobbying services during the upcoming two thousand eighteen legislative session.
Mr. Burns.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number two zero one seven dash one nine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook? Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion questions? Mr. Shannon.
I just wanted to understand why we needed another lobbying firm when we've got MAPPA, we've got, uh, United Cities, we've got all these groups where we're paying lobbyists to do things for us already. Here's one more lobbyist we're paying, so can we just have a little bit of discussion before we do this, please?
Mr. Manjali.
MAPPA does not lobby for us on any items. Um, the Sarpy County cities, we are a group formed for the purpose of protecting the city's interests in Sarpy County. We do that through a lobbying services agreement, uh, with this firm. Uh, none of, none of the cities have the, uh, staff to monitor the legislature with its daily goings-on and all of the bills-
to monitor the legislature with its daily goings-on and all of the bills that are introduced during the session. This firm is hired to do that for us and recommend action that we take, or that we would ask the legislature to consider. Now, we do have a, an agreement or services with the League of Nebraska Municipalities to also keep us informed on this entity or this legislative progress. But this is, this is a group that we specifically engage. This is our first engagement in several years since we have recently joined the five cities. And as you see from the agreement, we each pay one-fifth of the cost regardless of the size of the city. So, we are paying the same price under this agreement that the smallest municipality, Springfield, pays. So, we're going to get our bang for the buck on this thing.
Mr. Preister.
What I would add to that, and I think that's a good description, is that any other organization looks at one specific thing. MAPPA may be looking at a segment of what's before the legislature, but they don't automatically come back to us and tell us about other things. The League of Municipalities is looking at lots of things, and they're actually there day-to-day, but by the time they get out their reports, it's delayed. When you have your own lobbyists, they have somebody representing you there every single day, looking at all of the legislation, and reporting back to you immediately if there's something that is of concern to your interest. So, it gives us a voice at the table. It gives us ears where things are being done that may not be in the city's best interest. And for just over eight thousand dollars, I think this is one excellent investment to look out for the city's interest.
Any other questions? Discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve, current business.
Sub item A is approval of the land lease renewal for the communications tower located on Fleet Maintenance Property at two zero one two Betts Road with STC five LLC.
I would move to approve item twelve A.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item B is approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the Spark Meeting SAS Agreement for Agenda Management Electronic Meeting Services for a five-hundred-dollar one-time fee, or setup fee, and four thousand dollars annually.
I would move to approve item twelve B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any questions? Discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item C is the approval of and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Bellevue and Dillon Brothers Harley Davidson, Inc., for six police motorcycles for nineteen thousand eighty dollars annually, and we have the claim that would also need to be approved under this item.
I will move to approve item twelve C.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Questions? Discussion? See none, please vote.
And I'll move to approve the bill.
All voted yes.
Sorry. I'll move to approve the bill and pay these good people for the purchase we just authorized.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Mr. Modri?
That motion to approve all the claims, since we haven't approved any of the others yet as well?
No, it's just.
You did, you proved the claims with removing this one.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item D is approval of the proposal to renew the property casualty insurance with travelers and Safety National for FY seventeen eighteen.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make motion to approve twelve B.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item twelve B is approval to name the fountain in the lake at American Heroes Park to honor the service of former Mayor Inez Boyd.
Mr. Shannon.
I would move to approve item twelve E.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns.
And just, just a comment that, you know, I don't think we can just name this fountain for her without taking a minute to talk about the thirty years of service that she gave to Bellevue. Ten years on the council, twelve years as mayor, eight years on the Sarpy County Commission. Thirty years of a life is a lot to give to a community, so I think this, this honor is well-deserved by an individual that's done an awful lot for this community.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree, and I'm glad that Councilman Shannon said so. But former mayor, former council member, Inez Boyd, made a tremendous contribution to the city. There were times when it was that personal sacrifice. The salary of the mayor and the council at that time was even lower, so with little compensation and a whole lot of time investment, and a whole lot of her life taken away from family and from other things, she made a wonderful contribution to the city. I would just ask, we're naming the fountain, and it occurred to me, do we have a name for the actual pond or the lake? Can we name the lake and the fountain? I mean, we've got other things named there, but we're probably not going to name the lake for somebody else, but, and we do it all, and is that appropriate?
I think that was thrown around quite a bit, and it just came off the tongue a little nicer when you said, when it's Inez Boyd Fountain versus Fountain and Lake. And mainly the fountain, she was one of the largest contributor to the Bellevue Community Foundation that funded the fountain as well, and it's just a lot more splashier.
I appreciate the comment and accept it.
Mr. Manjimelli. Mr. Hanson.
I was going to say that as president of Bellevue Community Foundation, of course, Inez was one of the founding members, and she's been a huge contributor, not only to the fountain, but also to a lot of different activities that we've had in Bellevue. So, the money that you see through that community foundation, a lot of that is due to Inez Boyd. So, I think that was really the talk. You know, one of our main goals on when we first started was to pay for that fountain, and we raised forty-five thousand dollars, which we did give to the city on that, on the fountain. So, and she was a major contributor to that, so.
And we hope that the event will be well-attended. It will be October thirteenth. Invitations will go out first thing tomorrow upon your approval, and we hope to have a good turnout. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick comment. I had the honor to serve with Mayor Boyd on the Sarpy County Board, and I will honestly say, everything that I saw her do was with integrity, trust, and respect. That was never a question as we were going through our dealings with Sarpy County. A lady who, in my book, has a lot of integrity and has done nothing but good for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen is administration report. Comments will be limited to the current report. Are there any questions for Mr. Manjimelli? See none. We'll move on to item number fourteen, public request to be heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number thirty-five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statement made during the city council meeting by the mayor, members of the general, city council, city official employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual is so attacked as an elected official, a city official employee, or member of the general public, and City Code Section two dash six eight regarding the members of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted on the outside of the council chambers. Speakers shall leave their presentation to five minutes. Welcome.
Stephen Dawes, four thirteen Coons Memorial Drive here in Bellevue. It's really strange the timing on this, that we just approved the resolution for Papillion Sanitation to do our trash and recycling and yard waste for the next ten years. I've had some problems with them in the past. Last Tuesday, I was irate. Let me back up and say that I am in, my household, there's two of us, and we have more recyclables than we do trash. We precycle so that, will this be something that we'll compost, or is this something that is a plastic that's recyclable versus not? Thanks to Green Bellevue, I learned that I can take styrofoam out by the Mormon Bridge. You can't buy anything that doesn't come with styrofoam anymore, and I fill up my SUV whenever it's necessary and take it out there. And it was also Green Bellevue that told me I could take my glass down here to the park now instead of having to drive out to Sixtieth on the county line. So, yeah, we do take our recycling seriously. We bought one of these ninety-gallon tote things that are covered so that when it rains, the paper doesn't get wet, and it's got wheels, so it's easy for me to carry all this out to the curb. Last Tuesday, normally our recycling is picked up in the morning. I thought it was odd it hadn't been picked up. When the trash truck came by, all of a sudden, they took my recyclables and threw them in the trash, and went down the street and got all my neighbor's recyclables and threw them in the trash. And I feel that I'm paying for a recycling service, that I should have those things recycled and not thrown into the trash. After all, the idea is to keep it out of the landfill, put it back in the loop, and use it again. And I know exactly what happened. They had a truck breakdown. They couldn't cover it, so instead of delaying picking it up, coming late after hours, whatever, they just had made the decision to go ahead and do this. Some of the other problems I've had with this company that we, I think we need to approach them and start covering, they've had breakdowns where they've had hydraulic fluid all over the street. They'll send somebody out to tow the truck, the mechanic to work on it, whatever, but they won't put down oil dry, they won't sweep up the oil dry if it is there. There have been some safety violations. I know that they're not getting their inspections done for their pre-truck requirements. I did used to have a CDL, and I did used to pick up yard waste for Duffin Bar in Omaha. So, yeah, I understand the process and what things are going on. But we need to have a checks and balances. If their recycling falls by a certain tonnage on a day because their truck broke down, we need to be able to find them. We need to say, if that truck is making a sound and we know that the brakes aren't safe, we want to be able to have the ability for the Omaha, or, excuse me, the Bellevue Police Department to take it out of service until it is safe to get it to the mechanical repair shop. Thirty years ago, city of Omaha, one block south of St. Philip Newry Church, one of the steepest hills in Omaha, Duffin Bar had a trash truck, top of the hill, brakes went out, no way to stop it. It went flying down the hill. It went across four lanes of traffic and slammed into the house on the other side of the street. We were lucky somebody wasn't killed, but these things do happen. If you live in Bellevue, you're near a hill. I, I just want us to be able to hold them accountable for these things. So, we just don't call and make a complaint, and it gets thrown out. If they, they need to have a spare truck, whatever, so these things, when they happen. And it's not just that I call Solid Waste and make a complaint, and they call and tell Papio this is what happened, and forget about it. I want them to be held accountable under this new contract. I'm glad that it has automation now so that they have the claw to pick these things up, because lifting up trash and yard waste recyclables all day is certainly not easy work. I would like to see some kind of a minimum crew requirement. I know that when I was driving for yard waste for Duffin Bar, if there hadn't been a third person on the crew, the second person at the back of the truck would have been killed. There's no doubt in my mind that he would have been run over by a car. It was the third worker that stopped him from actually stepping out into the street in front of a speeding car that the worker couldn't see because it was the back of the truck. I didn't even have time to honk the horns, the safety warning for this guy. He was flying down the street. And it's rhetorical, you can't answer, but I just want to be sure that we have some checks and balances, so we, we just don't keep ignoring the same problem that happens over and over and over, or if there are consequences. Obviously, they're going to do their best to repair them. I would actually like to see a living wage paid to all the employees, as well as the minimum staff. But there are times when I have just a single guy driving down the street after hours in the hot sun of picking up trash all day long. I feel sorry for him, number one, but it's, it leads to injuries, and I don't want to see that happen to somebody that's working for money that ultimately we pay as taxpayers. Well, in this case, we give it to MUD, but I think you get the point. And if anybody wants to talk to me about this afterwards, I'm more than welcome to stay around and have a conversation. I do thank you for your time and for listening to me.
Mr. Roberts.
That's on the agenda. Can I answer a couple of those things?
Yes.
Please do.
Yeah, as far as the trucks go, in this contract, they're required to have brand-new equipment, so they're not going to be using anything that's, you know, ten, fifteen years old. And there are provisions for different, I'll just call them penalties, that there'll be liquidated damages for certain things that during our audits they are found doing. And so, we do have some provisions to protect the city from a lot of the things that have taken place in the past. And, yeah, we're going to do our best to correct a lot of the things that we've heard about.
Thank you. And thank you for your.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
I would add, too, there is a provision in there about daily inspections. They are required to inspect each truck. If you read the ninety pages of this new contract, it spells out accountability in many aspects, so I would encourage you to read it. They will be single-driver trucks, so there won't be anybody running around the back. An arm will pick up the trash, so we should eliminate the safety aspect as well. I, there still could be issues. It's going to be almost a year before we phase it in, so we've got a long time to educate and try and work any of the kinks out before it's implemented. But I think we've come a long way, and I do appreciate your recycling.
I should also point out when I called Solid Waste how nice she was to talk to me and listen to my complaint and say that she would forward on. And then, we started talking about the sewer thing. Not only did I used to drive for Duffin Bar, but I did used to be at one time a licensed wastewater operator, so. Well, two weeks ago, when we talked about the sewers, I was paying close attention. But, no, she was, in fact, I've talked to her before, but no complaints there at all.
Thank you. Are there others? I see none. I'll go ahead and close, public request to be heard. Item number fifteen, closed session, none. Item sixteen, adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion questions? None, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.